I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands as one nation, under God, indivisible, with every justice for all.
George Crowley has joined us at a distance.
Voice, gentlemen?
Yeah, payroll sheets coming around. There were two things of, yeah, in the mail that there were two issues. So one was the CPTC workshops, the fall workshops. I gave you the brochure for that. If you're interested in attending any of the workshops, let me know and we'll get you signed up. And the zoning books have been reprinted. I gave each of you a copy of the new ones. You can recite all your older versions, Donna, and Hughes' of yours before.
Right.
Okay, great.
I think I have it with me, if I'm right.
Cool.
But I do have it, yeah. So on the minutes, a couple of things. There's one paragraph that even though it doesn't make much difference, so I'm just going to forget that. There's one typo. But the one thing I was worried about is I did have four pages of commentary that I sent by email. I didn't know if that gets listed in the documents. I mean, it's testimony, I did see.
Okay, in the comments?
Yeah.
I've got, in the listed documents, I have a thing that says comments.
Some other place.
Right here.
Oh.
The comments for the bylaw hearing. There's the, and that'll include the list and then all of the comments.
Right, so that's attached on.
That's right.
Just curious, because you know how this works because you do the work, and we don't. So when one goes on site, looks at the minutes are approved, it's just this, and then?
Actually, I scanned those and I scanned all of the
The comments.
All of the documents that say they're attached.
Oh, okay. I haven't checked that out. I'm just curious. Okay, sure.
It seems easier to include as much as you can and scan it and.
Sure. Minor depo, typo is a lot, or else of this. And this paragraph actually doesn't make a whole lot of sense, but I'm surprised you get so much right, but it's sort of immaterial.
Okay.
That could clarify, but probably isn't worth it.
Okay.
Doesn't make any difference. And there were some courses that were of interest style yesterday. Okay, that would be just our dates and whatever.
Sure. Okay, where do we need to get started on that one, my dear?
We had a few comments from Donna on the minutes, if you guys would please.
Well, I guess at this point it's just that one typo. It's hardly.
Anybody have any problems with the minutes?
No.
Previously?
I propose to accept them.
Second. So be it. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I have to abstain.
So be it. We good?
Yeah, thank you.
Next.
And then procedure forms. I gave you an outline for the A and R procedure and the site plan procedure. Numbers, three and four in your packets.
I was glad to see them. I haven't checked against anything, but they meant it's a way for doing quality control and making sure everything, they look right.
Yeah, and then if there's ever a problem with an application or a partial application, it's something I can point to and say, this is, you didn't do this.
Focus is us, that's nice.
Yeah.
Make a motion. Can you do a motion?
If you want to adopt them, you could, you don't have to.
Make a preference for you?
If you manage to not approve them, it means it's status quo.
Well, yeah. It's a, if you have, if you want to direct me to generally follow that when it makes sense, then I'm happy to do it that way, too, rather than adopted protocol. It's either.
Any feelings?
I mean, you want to make it official?
Well, if this is going to, you know, so that basically feed to the fire and it's, does it make your job easier and more concise to follow these rules?
Yes.
Is it advantageous to accept them?
Yeah, if we understand we can have a little bit of leeway in, if necessary, if that makes sense.
Sort of recommended protocol, or suggested protocol. If anyone has questions, what they have to go through, you can point to it.
So what do you have, what do you do now? Do you just have, do you just explain how the process is done when the applicant comes in, or is there a written procedure?
There's no written procedure now, so I'm trying.
Yeah, I would, I would.
I lost the entire set of keys.
I would move that we.
Sometimes it goes off for no reason.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we approve these minutes. I mean, this procedure, set of procedures.
For A and R.
For A and R, correct.
As guidance, basically, on this one hearing.
Oh, yeah, as guidance for applicants.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. So be it.
Okay. So there were two of them, I think I just heard that was for the A and R.
A and R, next one, site plan procedure.
And it's the same thing when somebody comes in, there's no real written guidance, written outline for them to do. This describes everything that you do.
So you're moving for?
Yeah, so I move this, move to approve this
Site plan.
Site plan review outline for future applicants.
I'll second.
So those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You've got to say aye a different way when you say aye.
Aye.
Yeah, we're on TV, too.
We have a schedule.
Okay, fall workshops.
And then?
Just so curious, so Savvas is now talking about his project at the landfill transfer station. When are we likely to see that? That's a warrant article, but a proposed warrant article, they come here next.
I wouldn't, well, they would, if the project is approved by town meeting and funded and all that stuff.
I have to tell me first.
Right. It wouldn't make any sense to design it, do the detailed design first and then bring it to you.
Have too many details.
So I believe they will need a commercial solar special permit for it, and so before they go to construction, they have to come to you. I don't have any idea what they're.
How many acres is the dump?
I don't know.
How many what?
Acres.
I don't know, but I mean, look at Athens, that's impressive. You see all these solar panels right across that transfer station.
Oh, yeah, it's on the old landfill.
Yeah, well, it's the same idea for us. We just have a smaller landfill.
Much smaller landfill.
And it's nice that that's moving ahead. I mean, people have given excuses why they can't do that, but it's sort of a reasonable thing for a landfill is it gets compressive and adjusted.
Well, for him, I don't think he really knows, right? He just goes forever, so he's not to worry about.
What goes forever?
He's in his palace, he's a goal concern of our why. He's not to worry about ROI, short term ROI.
I mean, it's a good place for having solar rate panels.
Yeah.
And as land compacts, as it will continue to do it, you can adjust it, doesn't throw anything off.
Savvas, I was at the Selecting scene on Monday night when Savvas spoke about that, and it's a great option. And one of the reasons he picks the town site is because it takes up land, the town land, number one, so it doesn't cost anything. And it's land that can't be used for anything. You can't build on it, you can't put playgrounds, you can't really do anything on it, so it's ideal for this kind of use.
Well, actually, scientists can't sign a playground site, but you mass bossing site is atop the landfill.
Well, a landfill looks like a ball. It's an inverted wheelbarrow, so there's really nothing you can do with that landfill. And this works perfect. Now, the solar component, in addition to being green, is going to help decrease costs, you know, for rate payers in the future, so that will help. The key component here is peak demand. Our rates are determined by the peak demand for a very short period of time throughout the whole year, and that peak demand can come on one day and last for one hour, but that is my understanding, but that determines how much we pay as rate payers, in terms of how much a kilowatt.
Isn't that something else, isn't that natural gas driven? It's two different projects.
So this will help, this will help lower the, it'll provide electricity to help keep that peak demand lower, you know, because it'll be putting electricity into our grid. There's an additional component that he was proposing, a big gas generator. It would also help augment the peak demand, so that if you can keep that one or two hours during the summer when the demand is greatest down, then that will actually lower the rates townwide.
Just, I agree with that. You're saying you can't put things on landfills and, yes, having, having chemtrails, actually there's a 20-inch park.
In Cambridge, you're rich, yes.
So you can't do stuff like.
But in Cambridge, don't forget, Dawn, there's about 50 feet of fill on top of that dump in Cambridge
Yeah.
That they removed, that they removed from the tunnel when they put the red line in. So that dump in Cambridge is really quite heavily kept, and they did that.
I had to approve it. I was involved through, I understand that, but I'm just saying you can use it.
Yeah, but it's a wonderful resource for the city of Cambridge now.
Right, but people can use landfills as they get.
Our physical landfill is an inverted zebra. It can't be used for anything except grass.
That's my point, a camp where it has sledding hills and stuff. As you said, front feld, yeah. Problems is 745.
So that's the story of the, I think Savvas is going down a terrific path again.
So Laura's stalling for time. I know we had no budget necessarily for courses and things like that, although it does help with lowering the town's insurance. So is it Maren saying how many people are interested and then sort of doling it out, or?
Yeah, well, this time of the fiscal year, it's not a problem. Get to the end of the fiscal year, if we spend all the
Sure.
Budget, then you can go back to finance committee or you have to wait until the next year.
So this comes from a general miscellaneous fund, since we have no budget for training?
Well, we don't have a separate training budget, but it is, it does come out of the planning board budget, so. There are funds there.
It's really only four, four things that are close to us, the Boston ones, the Pittsburgh ones, and the Worcester ones. There's a Haverhill.
There's Haverhill, but just too bad, not great.
Yeah, they seem to move around to different parts of the state, different areas.
I might, Maren, I might take, I might attend the vested rights and non-conforming structures one, site plan review one, so I'll get back to you, all right? Those are the ones that are in November, November 15 to 14. This is a great resource, guys. It's a mint of these things every fall and every spring.
Yeah.
Planning changes, the whole concept of planning changes.
I think we're the only two people who've ever show up at these things, yeah.
I have to agree with you, Donna. You were up to one in Lowell, right?
Well, there.
The Autobahn one?
In Worcester and other places.
Yeah, the Autobahn one, where they talked about cluster zoning.
Right, which actually would have been very helpful having that concept with our last proposed bylaw, which
Exactly.
Ignored it.
Yeah.
And one of the reasons I think went down in flames.
So are we ready to open?
You sure are.
All right. Public hearing, solar commercial TV special permit on Spectacle Pond Road. The Town of Littleton Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Thursday, September 26, 2013, at 7:45 PM, Route 103 of Town Hall 37, Shattuck Street. To consider the application for a special permit, first link to Mass General Watch after 48, and the code of the Town of Littleton zoning. The applicant, our application is for commercial solar photovoltaic installation, section 173 through 180, through section 173 through 184, of the code of the Town of Littleton zoning. Property location is One Spectacle Pond Road at Sestis Map R22 parcel 13-1. The owner is Spectacle Pond Road Associates LLC. Applicant is Beaumont Solar Company. The applicant is seeking special permit for the development of a solar photovoltaic installation near the existing office building at One Spectacle Pond Road. Application and plans can be viewed at the Planning Board and Town Clerk's office during their regular business hours. Any person interested in wishing to be heard on the proposed plan should appear at the time and place designated. The Town of Littleton does not discriminate on the basis of disability. Further, a signed translation of this hearing will be provided for the hearing impaired upon request by contacting the Planning Board Office one week prior to the meeting date. Thank you, Richard Crowley, clerk. No applause. Thank you.
Good evening.
How are you?
How are you all doing?
Read his digest.
Bruce Ringwald, GPR. Here for One Spectacle Pond Road. This is the corner of the property. The property continues on over and is bounded by Spectacle Pond Road over here and Air Road here. This is the existing office building and the drive that comes through. There's parking in here. I think I have a sheet down below that shows all that. This right here, you can see the edge of the topography. It starts to slope uphill for the mound that is there to divides the Agri Industries property where the quarry is. This is the flat meadow in that area. So basically, the site's a bowl, comes on down, all the drainage from the parking and whatnot comes down this existing stone swale into the retention basin as an overflow outlet. The wetland, 100-foot buffer line is like here, from the wetlands to the pond out back. So we're out of the buffer zone. It's 1,287, give or take, panels set up. If memory serves me right, it's about a third of megawatt of power.
A third.
If memory serves right. It says on one of these front pages, I'll get to that part. It's going to be sitting on driven piles, IBIM piles, that are on another page that I'll show you in just a moment. And then the panel racking system will be linked across those piles and just sit right on the surface of the grade. There's no proposed proposal to change the topography. There will be the cutting of the vegetation that's on the slope up to the top, and, well, not to the top, but up along the ridge. And then some of the trees in the front corner, just this little area, will be cut so as to not shade the panels. There are a few pines, a little planting that is here and here and here, that will have to be cut for the panels to go in. Very secluded from the traffic as you come by on Air Road headed towards Air, and as you're coming back from Littleton as well, because it does kind of sit down a little bit lower in the back here, you will be able to see them, but you know, you'll have to cram to look at them as you're headed east towards Littleton. It sits right in here. Turning the page, we have on here the general details for the erosion control. We will have them put silt traps in the couple of catch basins right here, even though they won't be doing any work, just if there's any sort of interim runoff, so it doesn't get into the system. Here's the scenario in the second page, and I brought color one with me. It shows the parking in the building, relationship to the site, and, I was close, 373 kilowatts, so pretty close to a third. And then this is the basic racking system, the driven pile was in the ground, pretty basic system that's used for an awful lot of the solar installations. Good soils such as this site here, they can literally drive the piles into the ground. They don't have to be put in a concrete ballast or something like when you do them on top of landfill or other issues. Rack sits here, the racks go in, and I'm sure you've seen a bunch of them installed now because they're all over the place. And then once the racking's in, the panels are coming and set on them. And on this particular setup, I think the number of panels to the racks varies a little bit because they've set it up so they can get as many in as possible.
Are these fixed or these rotate with discovery?
No, these are fixed. Fixed location. And I did bring a long copy of the original plan that was approved for the site from Ross Associates. So Air Road here, this plan's turned 90 degrees. This area right here is the area that we're talking about. You've got the mound up here, the mound out here, all vegetated, the building, the intersection. Stone quarry's over here, so this is where it sits. They are, they are fixed. They don't have any rotation. They're fixed on, this is the solar Stromach North, and so they sit just due south, and then I think they're at a.
Facing Air Road?
Basically, well, actually facing this knoll. You know, if they're, if they're in this, they'd be more in the facing to Air Road. They're actually facing a little bit more towards, towards the entrance to Agri Industries. So they got Air Roads running at this angle, and these are going to be running at this angle, so a little bit askew to that. The application is for an amendment to this site plan decision because it is adding something to the plan, and a special permit under your freestanding solar photovoltaic bylaw. Conversation with Littleton Light and Electric, they've, the applicant, Chris is here now from Beaumont Solar, they've put the initial application in with Littleton, they reviewed that and okayed it, and now they have the impact study going. The impact study is in process with Littleton Light and Electric. They, talking with Savvas earlier today, they haven't completed the study, but basically with net metering, net metering is basically set up for residential projects. This project, albeit it's just about an acre of land, it's not that big of a project. It's a third of a megawatt in round numbers, and it's within their guidelines of being a project that can be used for net metering. So the project is primarily here to provide power to the facility on site. On weekends, there'll be a little bit of rollback that'll head back towards the facility. Savvas doesn't see any stumbling blocks, they just have to complete their process.
Can you explain what net metering is to the public?
Sure. Oh, we're on TV?
We're on TV.
I'm sorry, I should be standing up and be more formal. Net metering is basically that the facility is set up here so that the power generated by the solar panels is used by the end user, the site, the office building, and if there is not enough draw for electrical power here while power's being generated, then the power goes backwards, so your meter actually runs backwards, and, or in this case, it's probably a digital meter, so it digitally goes backwards, and the electricity goes out into the grid. And so that those of us that are home on the weekend watching the football game and doing whatever else we're doing can use the power that comes from here, and then they would get a reduction in their bill. The big reduction in the bill they get is they will generate a good percentage of their power by the solar on the property. It's pretty straightforward. Pretty basic.
Just so curious, I know we've gone over this before, but with the trees getting cut down, where you get to see a little bit of the panels from Air Road, is there any landscaping whatsoever, anything to? Yeah, we've already talked about how there would not be glare.
Yeah.
Just wanting, just a visual.
Gee, I didn't even get to talk about not being glare.
I was going to ask that.
Visually, no, we don't have anything proposed for landscaping, other than that which is out here. There will still be all these trees in the corner, and this earth and mound, this sits up fairly high. I don't remember, I want to say, well, actually, I can tell you right here, 317 against 245, so it's about a 30-foot high hill there.
No, I agree. I meant visually, I've seen a, I've seen a plan. I agree, I just.
We have not proposed any additional landscaping over in here. If you did, it would be, it would be out here at the edge. Remember, there is parking in here, and there's a few scattered trees. This is, whoops. There are a number, a couple trees around the edge of the parking lot, and then some lower landscaping in here, so that'll help screen that area, sorry, I'm standing in the way, some parking, so that'll help screen some of it from this angle. But no, there was nothing proposed. And again, it does sit down in a little bit as you head back over in here. We hadn't proposed any. Glare question. Solar panels are obviously designed to absorb the light, so they have a matte finish. I forget what the percentage is, it's in the neighborhood of, I want to say, 92 to 95 percent of the absorption they get. It's equated to the reflection off of this, is equated to the reflection that you get off of a grass meadow. You go by many of the airports, all have solar panels now, and they wouldn't allow them if there were reflection because you have the issue of, you know, pilots coming in.
Probably less glare than the windows on Mills site, so.
Most definitely less glare than the windows on the building. They're reflective windows, so yeah, most definitely.
Do you need a fence?
Excuse me?
Do you need fencing? Is there any, is there any safety concern?
That is, I don't know as though there's a safety concern, maybe Chris can answer that. I would say, to my knowledge, there's not. It's a question mark as to whether or not it needs to be fenced. When you get into the larger facilities, you know, megawatts and larger, they're typically fenced.
Is there security onsite?
The place has onsite cameras, do you have any security?
Actually, on the weekend, there is onsite security.
On the weekend, there's onsite security.
The weekend up, a lot of people jog the road, run the road, kids, not a lot of kids, there are kids with their bikes on that road, I mean.
Bruce is onsite.
It would be a curiosity.
So they have onsite security at both this building and the one down the road?
There's no way to get zapped off, though, is there?
No, you'd have to, you'd have to bite the, you'd have to bite the cable or the cord, and they come down and then they run them underground to the inverter.
And I was wondering, reading through these things, I guess this probably comes down to the site plan aspect. The fire department, Keith Dunn, had asked for automatic shut off and labeling.
Correct.
And I don't recall seeing that. Is that accommodated?
Yeah, there's no electrical wiring diagram in here per se, but there's an inverter here, so there's a switch at the inverter, and then when it connects to the transformer at the building, there'll be a switch, and they'll be adequately labeled for shut offs.
Fire service can maintain them.
What's that?
If there was an issue, an electrical fire, the fire services will be able to turn them off.
Yeah, well, they'd be able to turn off the power flowing from it. The only way you can turn off the power generating here is to cover them up with a tarp, you know, because they're.
You want to disconnect it, basically.
You want to be able to disconnect it, and it'll be clearly labeled for, you know, releasing the power.
And does that indicate either your plans or our documents? I didn't see that.
Neither, it's not. It's something that Keith said that, I said, what was you want? He said, I'm asking for it now, so it comes out in the planning board's decision, so you just put it in the decision, and when it's constructed, it'll be something that they'll put on.
Right.
It's standard operating. It's, it's standard operating procedure to have the disconnect.
Yeah, I'm sure Savas would require it.
When you spoke about Sunday, you were watching the game and your meter runs a little less. The excess power is not sold back to Littleton Light, does not pay you for the excess power?
What, my understanding of how it works is, is that basically the meter works backwards. So in essentially, in essence, they are paying you for the power, but what they're doing is, is you're, you're, they're buying it from you at a much less rate than you buy power from them.
There was another person in town that had a generator set up in their basement and they used the exhaust from the generator to heat their house. It was a pretty cool system they had set up. And it got, well, it was a Honda generator that ran this, this guy's property. And then Honda recalled all the, all their generators. So now it all came out, but what, he had to pay one kilowatt per month. In the winter, he produced more than he used, but they would not pay him for the excess power sent back to the line.
Yeah.
They actually billed him, he had to pay one kilowatt. You know what, do you know?
Yeah. I don't know the, is it announced, Chris, do you have the finite detail on how that works?
I don't know for sure.
Bruce, you're right, they, it runs back, but we pay significantly less than you got billed for. So I think it comes back in Littleton, I think you get paid, you know, paid or meter runs back four cents kilowatt hour, and I think we buy it like fifteen cents or something like that.
It's just basically you have to produce so much more than you would possibly use over the course of a month in order to get, you know, you would not get a rebate, you just wouldn't be paying as much as you ordinarily pay is what it is.
The one is cutting, they check anyway, at the end of the day.
As I understand, Savas wants control of what panels are there, and it's up to his board to decide whether they're gonna buy it or not. Since we're, you know, all like electric producing municipality, he has control of that. I was noticing there was no authority letters in there. I do get to go through the process.
We have, I thought that they were submitted under separate cover.
I don't understand.
I think that was two different questions, the-
The authorization.
Authorization letters, but no communication yet from the light department.
That's correct.
It's still up to them, but you've obviously talked to them.
That's correct. You know, if, if we move down the road appropriately here, my request would be that we would close the hearing, make the votes on the site plan modification, the special permit, contingent upon whatever Littleton Light and Electric water had for an outcome. I mean, essentially their outcome is just gonna be whether they're gonna allow it to flow back or not, so.
Make that motion.
My understanding is that the electric light department, they're willing to do large installations, but they're questioning individual homeowners as being small because they may be more troublesome and more difficult.
Well, in this case, it's, again, it's not-
Large.
But you're still saying it's, this is being served as if it was residential by-
It's being, it's being served as the ability to do the net metering because it's under the threshold, they have a threshold, I don't know what it is, I'm gonna guess it's probably around half a megawatt of where they'll allow the net metering to come back. Once you get above that, you're generating from, your purpose is not generating for just your own facility unless you're a huge facility such as, you know, IBM or something, you know? So in that case, you're, if you had enough there to generate for yourself, then, then that would be a different situation, but.
Bruce, what's the life of these, of this system?
Well, most of these are twenty-five, twenty, twenty-five years, this is a twenty-five year lease?
It's, it's not a lease, but the system-
A purchase?
The system will be generating electricity for a good twenty to twenty-five years.
Okay. And what happens at the end of twenty, twenty-five years?
Hopefully they get, the technology in the, in the panels just keeps on getting better and better. So then a good, hopeful scenario would be to replace the panels with upgraded panels and keep on going forward. Otherwise, there is a letter that I believe was submitted to Warren, if not, I have a copy with me, where One Spectacle Pond Realty Trust, if I have the right name, the owners of the property have stated that they will dismantle and remove all the facility if they goes into non-use.
Do they have the escrow if they go there?
Oh, there's on there, right here. Don't go-
Do they need to escrow?
Escrow of non-use?
Bankroll?
If it was another facility, I mean, a, a lease facility, then I would think yes, where they are the owners of the property and they own it, they're gonna be purchasing the panels, I don't believe they need to have an escrow.
They don't, they don't have that.
They're just stated, they've, they've provided a letter that, did we get that letter to you? Yeah, 'cause I have a copy of it here, if not, and I can get it right over to you, that they'll remove all the panels, the racking system, the electrical connections, and be responsible for bringing the property back to its existing conditions.
You got problems?
No, no, this is unlike the one on distribution way where we're purchasing the full output.
Right.
Just like IBM, if they haven't come through, they are, just like Acton Toyota, if they haven't come through, they are, a lot of small businesses are doing these things because they're required, companies are required not to have a sustainability quotient.
Yeah.
And frankly, if you look at the light department, about fifty percent would be a twenty percent Charlie, maybe pass that on as we pay the light bills, so we have it, but a lot are doing their own just partially, frankly, because it's an opportunity just to try to be a player, you know? And this is a perfect example of that. Generally, none of electricity leave the building. Obviously, nights aren't an issue. The only time really there'll be a net metering will be on weekends, when they're not, when they're operating. So that there'll be net metering back to the system and they're doing the study now to, to make sure that's balanced, which for the amount that they'll be doing is, is not gonna be significant.
So just as a general, no, I mean, I know most of these facilities have their own security, but I mean, what's, what's the physical danger to a kid getting in there?
I suspect with any type of, we obviously, everything's in carbon, but the, the, the panels themselves, nothing.
No, not the panel, I'm just talking about the floor. I mean, it's on all the time, right? The sun shining is on.
Yes.
So if a kid gets in there, I mean, what's the, I mean, is there a middle danger or what's?
That's a great question.
My problem is, is that that is right off the road, unlike distribution way, which is, you never see any kids going down on their bikes, that, I could, I could run across there.
It's fenced, right? I mean, there are always fences because there were kids throwing rocks out and stuff like that.
This one is not proposed to be fenced at this time?
It's so small.
Yeah.
Well, the one, frankly, the one, the one at the conduit road is not, Steve. Frankly, Jerry, I'll look at that, I have, I can't-
I have no idea, I'm trying to ask the question.
I can't answer that question.
I know that, on ones that are up and running, and I'm sure Chris has too, because he's in the business, but, you know, you walk right down the rows, you touch the panels, you get a whole lot of, you get nothing.
Yeah, I'm not worried about a normal person walking down a road getting electrocuted, I'm not worried about some kid going in there undetected, scoring rounds.
But maybe, but Jerry, I would think that it'd be the same level of danger which is minimal unless one to cut into the conduit, which is steel, or an underground service to a building or home, right?
I don't know.
Yeah, because it's nothing different than that. It's electricity flow-
Is no exposed lead off the panel?
No.
No, nothing.
It's all okay?
From what I'm hearing, it sounds like an attractive nuisance. It's only one concrete's on prison land, quite clearly, and there's no trespass.
Yeah, except that's in a prison.
Yeah, I mean, there's a reason why people might come out.
Well, those gates are always open right there, that's a light up in the house.
But it is a welcome sign, you know?
Yeah.
And maybe it's not our issue, I'm just, I'm just asking a question, I mean, that's, that could be fire department or whatever, if they had an issue with it.
Jerry, that is, that is our, our issue, and that was one of the questions I was gonna bring up, because there's a, there's a photovoltaic installation down four and eighty-five, probably about fifteen miles before we're, probably Route nine.
Right by Marlin.
That whole total, that whole place is, is fenced.
Correct.
And they have the, you know, the transformers within the, the area. So I would, I would think that you'd, you'd wanna provide some kind of protection.
I don't know, all the ones I've seen in Vermont, Pennsylvania, all the places I go for business are all fenced, I've never seen one.
I mean, it doesn't have to have an ugly fence, but something to make it obvious that you shouldn't be-
Many times when they have those fences, it's because they're worried about a guy pulling up with a truck and not hooking up.
I agree, yeah.
Here in Millsite, they have onsite patrol and security all weekend and stuff like that, it's a pretty open area. I mean, you have a nuisance, you also have a nuisance, you know, a bit of a next door too.
No, I don't, I'm not quite disagreeing, I'm just, you know, I'm asking the question.
But I think it might not be any different than any electricity when a kid rides his bike by a telephone pole or anything else.
The thing is, this is, this is high voltage, it's right here.
I could say that high voltage, hanging up and off a telephone pole too.
It's unlikely a kid's gonna climb up a pole.
Yeah, but let me add, if I may, I'll just example that, and then I don't think it's any different, and again, I don't know the particulars of the connections, but I don't believe it's any different than a three-phase or even a single-phase house service coming down a tilting pole, it's wrapped in conduit along the pole, where the edge of the driveway, edge of the, the sidewalk, and then it goes underground to the home. So from that perspective, you touch that pole, you're fine. I mean, the point is, right behind that, on that pole, right behind that piece of steel conduit is, if it's three-phase, it's twenty-five thousand volts, fourteen thousand four inches to ground, if it's single-phase home, it's, you know, full power, okay? So that from that perspective, if you're concerned about a physical, the physical connection, it's all in conduit, it's no different than a sidewalk, but underground, you took it by the sidewalk.
All right, my question is, at the final, I assume that out of twelve hundred and eighty-seven panels, each line is gonna run, come down, run into, underneath into a larger conduit and make its way, right?
Typically what happens is there, on the backside of the panels, there is wires that come through and they connect, and they connect through, and they typically connect a series of panels in a chain, and then that drops down and that's connected and that's all in the conduit.
How about if we require instead of doing a, a plastic conduit, a metal conduit? It's a little harder to get into, they're gonna bring something that's harder to break, can't break it in the winter with a hammer or something, they gotta take a sawzall or something on that line. It has to be a, a certain scheduled, you know, like a schedule forty plastic or something with some, some substance to a metal conduit that has to be placed in. If you, if you're worried about it, I didn't see a-
So you want a schedule forty or not?
Well, no, a schedule forty plastic, something in metal that's, you know.
Typically, your plastic is schedule eighty, I skipped to your electrical conduit is schedule eighty or you're in the metal. Is that right? Schedule eighty for typical electrical conduit?
It depends if it's, if it's-
How far underground are you gonna run these, these conduits once you put all these panels in? You're gonna drive the piles, you're gonna put the, the, the main, the home run going back to the building, right?
No, it comes, it comes to an inverter here.
Yeah.
And then it's under, and that's all underground collection to this point, and then it's underground to the building to where the-
Whatever the electrical code is, be, what, two feet? Electric code's two feet, isn't it? Yeah, whatever the electric code is.
I think anything, anything within, you know, two feet of the surface, make it metal. Once you get down to these two feet, you wanna go back to plastic, it's fine with me. But anything that's exposed to the air within two feet of, underground, it's gotta be some heavy-duty metal with it. If anyone knows what-
The steel conduit for electrical services is very standardized, so that's interesting, good point.
You know, even though the electrical code, Peter might, might say that PVC is fine, I'd go along with you in lieu of putting up that fence.
We gotta work a little hard, and, and again, if you find that there's, the police are getting called because of a bunch of reasons, then we'll reissue, we'll visit it again and we'll talk about a fence. All right?
Sure.
Fair?
All right.
You gonna nod your head? Nod his head?
Yeah.
Yeah, shielded in metal, even though the electrical code probably allow you PVC, I'd feel much better to have it in metal and then, and it takes my worry about having a fence around the property.
Okay, any other questions?
Yes, yeah.
You got another one?
I wanna make sure that it's, it's properly signed to say high voltage. Now, that might be in the, one of your requirements with your, your electrical permit, but if it's not, I wanna make sure that there's a signage there that makes it very clear to anybody that this is, this is high voltage area, do not enter. And, and the, another question I had was, how are you gonna maintain between the rows? Are you gonna be mowing there?
Yeah, typically it's mowed. Typically, they go through and they, they mow it, or maintaining the grass underneath, the metal that's underneath. Currently, it's allowed to grow long, they'll, they'll mow it probably a couple times a season during this, just 'cause they, they don't want anything coming up to shadow it.
You're not kind of, sorry, chemicalize it, you know?
No.
I'd like to see that as a condition, that it be made, that the grass not be allowed to, to get-
Well, we don't want it to, to shadow the panels, so that, that's not an issue.
And, Merritt, in our last, with our last photovoltaic review, did we require a bond for the closure at the very end, end of the life of the system?
No, we didn't, because that was included with the agreement that they had with the light department.
But you, we already talked about that.
We didn't talk about a bond.
I mean, it's the same fact.
It's a, it's a different though. So what, we didn't-
No.
Fire bond?
No.
What I have here from Spectacle Pond Realty Associates is, "In the event of discontinuance to commercial solar photovoltaic installation, One Pond Spectacle Road Associates, the property owner agrees to hire qualified contractor, contractors to properly remove, dispose of solar panels, structural supports, all electrical components, including but not limited to the wiring, inverters, transformers, equipment, wiring, associated connections to the building and to Littleton Electric Light Department's utility interconnection. The owner will be responsible for protecting in place or repairing any damage to the existing utilities, drainage improvements, paved accessways resulting from the removal of any equipment related to the commercial solar photovoltaic installation to the satisfaction of their respective owners. The owner will be responsible for ensuring that the land disturbance associated with removal of any equipment related to the system will be stabilized."
And we'll have that on file?
Yep.
Here's another copy, just to make sure. Sounds reasonable. Any other questions? You have one more?
Well, appropriate signage has been mentioned, so it doesn't have to be ugly, that's a possibility. All right, dealt with, in lieu of the fence and landscaping, you have tech for electrical aspects of it, dangerous aspects.
Anything, no?
Yeah. And I know with the cell towers, that, you know, we have revision if it's no longer used, if it's removed, but that's on public land, this is on private land, but we may want to have some condition if you stop using it, but.
Pretty sure you just addressed that with that letter, didn't you?
Yep. And I think your bylaw says if it's in non-use for twenty-four months, am I researching right?
And actually, you could have a condition that refers to this letter.
Let's have that in there, please, Jerry.
And, and, you know, we're getting into this, one of the things that, yeah, I had to, had to figure out the power levels and stuff. We specify, I guess it must be either site plan or the special permit, how many panels, but, you know, I wonder if there's another way to characterize it, like square footage, you know, because panels might differ in size or power capability, some way there's an over-controlling, but it gives you an idea of what's there. I mean, it sounds like other people doing the impact assessment, like, you know, if you wanna know what, if someone looks at something rather than having a hunt for it and find-
Yeah, it's on, it's on the, the plans from RIB Solar that's a consultant with Beaumont Solar, and it's right here, the total watts is-
Right. I agree, if you hunt for it, find it, I was wondering if our documents, if we'd wanna specify more than that.
We just, they're, they're gonna be submitted with these plans, so we're gonna agree to these plans, we'll be initiating these plans, so that means-
Right, I agree, I just, I said, instead of hunting for a warrant for our permit, we wanna specify more than just X number of panels, you know, like the power capability, the square footage of solar ray panels. Panels could be different sizes, they're probably mostly common.
But why would, why would we care?
That's all going through a permit, might care, I mean, it's a summary.
Yeah, we have the, the racking dimensions on, on sheet two oh point oh, and it has the dimensions, the, the dimensions are essentially twelve, twelve feet, eleven inches, or thirteen feet, top to bottom.
I'm not really questioning what's on your-
Do you have a suggestion for something else to use? Could some, some metal lots?
Regardless of-
What I'm saying is, is our model, site planned or, or special permit, do we wanna specify something other than the number of panels?
You can only put so many panels in so many areas in such a, in so many feet, right?
I, I for one don't think, I want to, because, because I think the plans are very clear, and if we, if we add any language that could confuse what's very clear, then, then we're just gonna-
And once again, I'm not talking about the plans, that's the request, I'm talking about the permission being granted, the other side of it.
Right, right. The only, the only hesitation that I would have relative to that is looking at the twenty years down the road when we have some new technology, you know, if the panels are smaller years down the road when we have some new technology, you know, if the panels are smaller and do the same thing, then great, and now we get a little bit more power out of the thing because we were able to get more out of it. I mean, that's what has been happening, is out of a, a basic panel, they've increased what the input or the output is.
You put five pounds in a five-pound bag, in this area, you're taking up one acre of land, you're putting X amount of, of number, I don't care if there's, if there's 50 panels because they're 10 by 10, or 1,000 because they're, you know, two by two, whatever the math works out. It's the area that you're using, I understand, I can see what his, his, his issue is, but...
I know, but just, just, just to get to this point, I mean, you realize it's right there on the front page. So do you want something else in there, or you want...
Me?
No, I'm asking Doug.
Well, I'm saying, is there something better than just X number of panels without specifying what the panels are? Maybe the acreage covered, maybe the power generated...
For the plan?
In the description, you're talking about in this description right here.
Okay, but if you change anything, then you have to come back and modify it, right?
If we take up a bigger area, then we'd have to come back and modify it.
Doug, you want to modify the descriptions, what are they?
Yeah, I'm saying, is there a better way to describe this, other than just X number of panels?
I don't know how you can describe it better.
We're not asking them to do that now, though.
How about if we, if we have a, have a condition that if the area is larger than indicated on the submitted site plans, then we need to come back for an amendment or a new special permit?
Yeah, something like that would, as long as it's workable for you, and we're communicating so the same area.
I'm okay, I'm okay with the language that they have.
Last question.
I have one more point. Now, when I, when I Googled the bridge on Route 28 West...
Yep, right over here.
And looked at the site, it looked like you could, you could get some glare back on autos going eastbound on Route 28.
Glare from what?
You could get...
From the array.
Cars going eastbound, so a car going this way...
A car going this way.
Going, going westbound.
East, eastbound, towards the common.
Towards common, eastbound, this way, this direction.
Yes.
And you think you can clear, well, so let's start with, the panels are sitting in an, in a line like this, and they've got to tilt like this, so you would have to have, it would have to be a morning sun hitting it and reflecting back here, the first thing is they're going to, you know, your reflection is going to be back up, and again, where I was before, the panels have a flat, a matte surface, and they're set up to be 92 to 95% absorption, and...
It would have to be more like noon and not a morning sun.
Well, yeah, but even that, you're not going to get a reflection, the, the reflection you get off of it is equated to a, a meadow of grass.
And...
So I don't think there's any issue relative to glare, I mean, all the ones I've seen set up, I haven't had problems.
And Bruce, you shouldn't have any problem with, with adding a, a condition, and if, if there is a glare problem, then, then the owner of the photovoltaic array has to, has to...
Has to put some landscaping in over here?
This is a point...
Agreed with that, Scott?
Are you asking us if we want to do that, or you, you're saying that he has to...
I would like to add a condition to the, to the permit, that if there is a glare problem, they, if they require...
We'll put that in there, just to be safe for pedestrian...
We're good with that.
That if, if, as there's any reports to the police department come in, and any numerous, you know, three per week, that there's some form of solar glare affecting traffic in that area, that we will address a shielding fence of some sort along that area.
Screen.
A screen along that area.
Okay.
Good?
Great.
Great. No problems? Everyone happy? Let's make, someone make a motion, please.
Do we know what we're moving on?
Ah, that's what I thought, we're moving on...
First thing you can do is if you're done taking testo, or you can close the public area.
Any questions from the crowd?
My name's Scott Colby, I'm with Aggregate Industries, as the Beachfront Environmental Land Services Manager. And certainly, we're in favor of green energy and new projects such as this, but being the owner of the Aggregate Industries quarry near on your road, we often find that things that pop up around us tend to have comments about us later on down the road. And I think that you've seen that before, in some of the development projects that have gone on in the area of 2808, as an example, and I just really want to just go on the record that, that we're a large industrial site right next door, we're a quarry, we're involved in any blasting of stone, the crushing of that stone, processing of the stone, and I hope that we can be a compatible neighbor with this facility. And, you know, I'd like, I'd like if the, if the plan board could somehow record or in some way mention that, you know, you're in, you are in the vicinity of a hardware quarry, and you may experience the activities associated with the operation of that facility.
Are you talking dust?
Eh, probably.
Well, historically, I think you've, you've not, previous owners have knocked out one of the windows in those, the building, all those reflective glass plates.
Yeah, certainly that would be something that we would react seriously to, but I'm talking about the normal day-to-day operations of the quarry, some certainly dust within, within our cer, within our per pounds of what our permits require, but there's vibration associated with it as well, and things like that, and, you know, I'd hate to have you come back and, as is, has happened, believe it or not, in the past, that, you know, we moved in, we want you to move out, and, so I'm just going on record.
Well, I mean, can I just speak to that? Since I live on New Estate Road, and I hear you through my basement while I'm working all the time, and I've never even seen a glass of water, so, I mean, don't, don't worry about it. Every time you guys blast, you go right through my basement, like, the vibration goes right through my basement, but nothing moves.
Right, and it's probably more, more of the dust issue than I'm concerned about than the vibration.
Jim?
I'm pretty sure the owners of the property, Spectacle Pond Realty, would be more than happy to coordinate with Aggregate Industries in the event of an issue at neighborhood situations between you guys anyways. They always work things out.
Again, you understand that, that they've been in business here for decades and decades, and any dusting issues are not going to be, you're not going to be asking them... I understand, I just, in his defense...
We've, we've seen on distribution ways, some other concerns with the solar farm there as well, they, they, I believe, have gravel roadways within their panels, and they were putting up a fence, and, you know, there are very many activities around this area that kick up dust. I don't know, police pave, you know, we, we take dust very seriously, we water all of our roads, we water our stockpiles, we have watering in our, in our crushing equipment and whatnot, and it's state-of-the-art as well, as you know, and, but, there, you know, there may be some impact that may affect panels from, I'm not saying where it would come from, I think of multiple sources, but I just want to...
You won't hold them harmless for any dust created from their facility?
If there is dust that comes on the panel, we will not automatically assume it came from the quarry.
No, not automatically assume it comes from the quarry, you will hold them harmless for any dust on your, I can't do that?
May I object? Obviously, Scott's establishment is, is, you know, prior existence, but for example, if a dust cloud is emitted from, from a wall being taken down that's well above the standards of the industry, whatever they're allowed to have, then, then any of the solar problems in the area have every right to exceed damages because they've exceeded zoning requirements. So within the confines of zoning requirements, sure, but let it go with that.
At least you could probably analyze those.
So think about that.
One point, though, we're regulated by ANCH, which is a federal organization.
You're also regulated by quality standards and everything else.
DEP, yeah. We were regulated by everyone.
Lines.
But, so, the point is, a blast, though, is, is the dust produced by a blast itself is not regulated, it cannot be regulated, because the, it's, you can't wet inside the stone. So if you do get a dust cloud off of a blast that falls into the quarry, that dust from that blast is, cannot in any way be regulated, just because of the physical nature of taking that stone and putting it on the floor. Yes, if we have dust coming in off of our roadways, and our crushers, and our stockpiles, things like, things like that, yes, we're responsible for those.
Well, above the limits, above the standards.
And historically, there've been issues, and there've been reports by, to show the force of health, but that's in times past, I think you've tried to achieve...
I think we're doing a wonderful job, quite frankly, but...
Yeah, I like it as well, with the dust. But again, I mean, just, just to point out, I've been by your site a thousand times, I walk around that area all the time, the only time I've ever seen a major dust cloud come off your site is a, after a storm, and on the weekend. I've never seen it while you guys were like, here, you wanted equipment, and it's always been, but it was a ghost town, that's it.
Okay, you guys, I'm sorry, you guys going to work together?
Yes.
I've been there for 14 years, and I, I've never seen anything.
First one's tested.
Yes, we can work together.
So you're not going to come back to us in a year and say, we want you guys to stop watching?
You just said you're not going to.
We don't want to get into...
We must rather sue each other and come together.
Exactly.
All right, we don't want to...
We don't have to waste our own time and money.
All right.
Perfect, let's go.
All right, any to close the hearing? All those in favor?
Some move?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, leaning closed. The hearing closed. They've got to write this stuff down for me.
Okay, we have a draft in the packet, drafted a special permit.
That being...
But there are certain things we're going to add, but I got...
Here, let me give you my card.
Eight, number eight, number nine. Eight is a special permit.
Okay, so on page two of that, you've got conditions about halfway down, the first condition suggested is an agreement between applicants and the Littleton Electric Light Department. I'm not exactly sure what I need to call it, agreement, but I'll just say it's an agreement.
We'll talk.
An appropriate agreement.
Okay.
Regarding in between the applicant and Littleton Electric, approval is for approximately this number of panels.
Not to exceed so many acres?
Yeah.
I mean, that sounds like the best way to characterize, that's how everyone...
Well, I don't agree with that.
Does that exceed the area shown on the site plan?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. I mean, you need to nail it down, so...
All right, let's put it down as that, please.
He's giving you a site plan.
Not to exceed...
Yeah, because you're, you do reference the plan in the decision.
All right.
You asked for a condition, what was the other one?
Uh, the fire department.
Mowing between the panels.
Yeah, mowing. Mowing and then electric cutoff.
Right, and late lane.
All right, so the conduit underground, the electric cutoff, the marking of the panels, a deal with Littleton, Littleton Light, that's part of it. An agreement between you two not to fight over dust.
I don't need an agreement between them.
That's a verbal, you know, you guys are good with that, right?
That doesn't...
What's appropriate signage, by warning of the...
We got that already.
Yep.
If problems with...
With any glare associated with the panels, with the traffic on 2A, a, we'll address it in a future date of...
Maybe fence.
Fencing or, or...
Or landscape, proper.
Landscape screening, something to eliminate the glare. And again, if...
Did you get the metal conduit?
Yeah.
We put that in. Is there anything else that we discussed that we may have missed?
I don't think so.
Don't you believe in something else, all right?
On my list.
How about your list?
You got the moment, all right?
Yeah, keeping the, maintaining the grass beneath.
Yeah, that's in there already.
Said that.
Okay, with those things being...
Conditions of approval.
Conditions of approval.
For the special permit.
Those are the special permit.
For the special permit.
Mm-hmm.
How am I doing, see, you see, my lips are moving, but...
Peter, you're doing fine.
I move to accept our grant, the special permit.
Yeah.
Under these conditions.
I'll second it, you shouldn't be the one moving, that's okay.
All those there?
Aye.
Aye, aye.
Aye.
Lips aren't even moving.
Awesome.
If it gets done, fine, what's next?
Okay, and then you have the site plan modification.
That's number nine?
And...
Subject to the same, number additions?
Yes, and this time, and this time I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We got to use that sign.
Anything else? Number 10, what's this? Site plan modifications over PVC. Before you just went through all this, we don't need any of that?
When do you think you guys will stop?
Hang on, let's get all this, before you start asking more questions, let's get all this taken care of. Is that it?
For this site, yes.
For this site. Is there another site coming up?
Yep.
Which one's that?
One distribution...
It's not my thing. Is it the same?
These people, they want to get it going right over there.
Wait, what's there at it?
What are you guys breaking ground?
We'll wait for the impact study to be complete, and once that, what do they shoot, for Novemberish?
November.
Lisa.
These are two different solar panel things?
Yep.
No, it's not.
Distribution way, in general.
Okay.
Can I have a...
Go on, say it.
See you guys.
Seesaw?
Oh, I saw it, did I do that?
That's right, everybody's saw it.
You see a catch?
No, because you're don't draw it. It's quite strong.
Yeah. I didn't mean to call.
All right, what's next, Merritt?
Where are we now?
Jerry, how are you?
How are you? Keep going after them.
I missed last time.
This is the, all right, this is the one we're, we've already, we've already approved a bunch of this stuff, it just has to do with...
We need to prove the temporary tent in the outdoor testing area, they would like to make it permanent, so...
And this is the one that's already on pavement now, and you're just going to...
Right, covering the same moment.
Yes, so, so in 2009, before you, for a tent structure to do some testing in, they test household and consumer appliance kind of products, and they need it out of the building with there's no IRF interference. So they've been doing it in a tent, they did it in 2009 for a year, it was successful, they came back and reworked it for two years, still successful, so what they'd like to do is replace this tent structure with a Reed's Ferry type shed, so everything stays the same, maybe, maybe the shed is, the tent is like 12 by 15, and the shed is maybe 12 by 16, or some small difference.
Is there, is, what is the size of the shed?
14, 16, it's all in your package.
All right.
But it's all in the same location, it's all on...
What's a Reed's Ferry shed?
It's one of the modules, you know, one of the modules.
Okay.
And then, there's just a couple of small things, they currently have a, sort of a pressure-treated deck running to it, I think that's from public plans, because it has this, they sort of had a, this is the site, very large site, and they're talking about a very small area of a dent. So this is what it looks like, but that's the building, this is the area, there's a sort of a PVC decking running to the tent, they need to replace that, just because it's gotten weather-worn. And right now, when they do testing, they bring out an extension cord, a heavy-duty extension cord, and bring it back in again, if possible, they just like to hardwire something out here so the plug isn't in the building. building.
Do it all by code, whole permit for everything?
Building code.
Bury it down, bury it underground.
Real clapboard and.
There's a note in here that the landlord has approved this.
Okay.
Use, there's an old note from the fire marshal that he was satisfied with the separation of buildings, I've run this by the local inspector, and he's approved the building permit after.
How far away from the building is this?
It's about 20 feet.
Money feet?
Yes.
Picture looks off, all right, that's the end of the building, the end of this wall. Wait a minute, this.
Yeah, yes, absolutely.
Can you show me this here? This colored area is what the area we're talking of?
The, this ramp ends at, right about where the, where the building will be, and this colored area is sort of the area around the actual platform, only covers about, about the space of these cars.
The platform that is in, in place now?
Yeah, there's a, currently, there's.
This is just an old picture?
That's showing the area, I guess that's showing the overall, the overall area that we want, that we keep separate, so we don't have any parking along this, in that area.
I think this is a better, this is a better picture of it. The tent goes here, right near the building, but they keep all of this open as decking with the, there's a antenna down here.
Okay, so 33 feet.
33 feet.
Yeah, 33 feet.
Okay.
And excuse me, this is Jonathan Stewart, and he's with.
This entire area now is presently decked?
Yeah, it's covered with marine grade plywood, and we want to change it to pressure-treated.
It's wearing out.
All right, and that's elevated off the ground now?
By, just by a 2 by 6.
And the Reed's Ferry sheds usually come with floors already in them.
Right, and we're not going to use the floor in the Reed's Ferry shed, it won't be present.
What are you guys doing?
We do regulatory testing for electronic equipment, and, and so we need a space that's away from other electronic devices.
It's auditory, from what I recall. Sound, sound?
Uh, no, it's not.
Oh, okay.
It's, they don't test anything that makes a lot of noise, they test like the.
Right. I remember.
It puts out.
Way back in the beginning.
Okay.
And.
That was an issue for them, yeah.
This is not going to be heated structure?
I was just curious.
Uh, we, we weren't planning on putting permanent heating in, but we will probably have space heaters in, this is meant to replace a tent because we do testing all year round, so we would have a portable HVAC, that was the plan, which plugs into an extension.
Well, if you're going to be running heat out in that thing, then I don't think an extension cord is the way to go.
Is this one?
Yeah, and they're asking about running underground, I think it's going to become a necessity to have.
That'll be controlled by their building permits.
Yeah, put that under, that this, all these things need to pass muster by Rowland.
Yeah, Rowland's got.
The fire department, the whole nine yards.
But we see here, there's a shed that's going to be 33 feet away from the building on a, in a deck, and, yeah, this is, and it's in the same spot they were doing it before, I'm okay with it, I would, I would move to approve.
Somebody sing the phrases, and I'll say you all approve.
I would move to approve the site plan modification.
Second.
Well, I think I had to close the hearing first. No hearing?
Nope, not hearing, just meeting.
See, trying to put words in my mouth on the wrong ones, it's the last time I take your advice, and, so, done, probably spiking my candy too.
So you moved to close it?
I don't have to close the hearing, it's.
No.
No, we move, it's a.
Or break the vote.
Sensual modification?
Not a hearing, just a meeting.
So you moved to close the meeting on the site plan modification?
No, not closing the meeting, we're just doing a vote.
We're moving to take a vote.
Sequence.
Imagine my mind.
Come on, you're in charge, say it, do it.
Use my words. All right.
Before us, we have a, we have a, a site plan modification to one distribution drive,